Good evening and welcome to the June Planning Board Meeting for the City of Bayonne. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chairperson Fiermonte.
Here.
Commissioner Vallos.
Here.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Locke.
Present.
Commissioner Quintella.
Here.
Commissioner Valado is absent. Commissioner Becker is absent. Commissioner Mayor Rano is absent, then Commissioner Locke is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is a statement with regard to the Open Public Meetings Act Sunshine Law. This regular meeting of the City of Bayonne Planning Board has complied with the Open Public Meetings Act Sunshine Law. Annual notices of the schedule of regular meetings were published in both the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger newspaper. The schedule of regular meetings for calendar year 2024 is filed with the City Clerk's Office and has been posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building. Copy of the agenda of tonight's meeting was emailed to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger at least 48 hours prior to this meeting and is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building and the City of Bayonne website. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption of minutes. Commissioners, you will receive the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting held on May 14, 2024. Are there any recommendations for changes? If not, I would look for a motion to approve. I'll move. And on the vote, please.
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, I think we have some communications.
We do have communications. There's a letter from Mr. Donald Pepe dated May 9, 2024, requesting that the matter of milaxme Bayonne Urban Renewal LLC, the Site One flagship Street Block 751, lots 1.11, 1.14, 1.15 be carried until the July 9, 2024 meeting with preservation of notice. Can I get a motion and a second to approve that?
So moved. And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a letter from the Mayor of Bayonne with regard to the appointment of Commissioner Vallos and Commissioner Booker for terms expiring on June 30, 2025. There does not need to be any action by the Board with regard to that. That's for informational purposes.
Okay, thank you. Noted.
Next on the agenda is item number six. It's Planning and Development Regulation Amendment, Presentation of Amendments.
Excuse me, Mr. Kim, so there is another walk-on communication in full weeks with regard to...
There was, um, I didn't see it. I'll re-mention it later.
Let me back up, back to communications. There's a letter with regard to an application that's pending this evening, item number 13, P-24-011. That's Quattro Michi LLC, and the site is 585 Avenue E, Block 121, Lot 25. And the applicant is looking to adjourn that matter from this meeting to our next meeting of July 9, 2024, and he would like to preserve his notice in this matter. So he's requesting that no further notice be required on the part of the applicant. So we need a motion to carry this matter to July 9, 2024, and a second.
So moved.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
So item number 13 has been adjourned this evening if anybody's here on that matter. Next is what I started, P-24-001, a planning and development regulation amendment, presentation of amendments to the City of Bayonne Ordinance, Chapter 33, Planning and Development, Section 33-3.1, zoning officer, and Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations, Section 35-31.2, Duties of the Zoning Officer Updates. Mr. Skilander.
Good evening, Mr. Skilander.
Good evening, Chairperson Fiermonte. How are you?
Good, thanks. All right.
Good. Okay, so for the first ordinance, it's updating the definition of the duties of the zoning officer, both in Chapter 33 and 35. They are defined with the same responsibilities. The amendment really here is kind of a clarity amendment to the zoning officer definition. So currently, kind of to compare and contrast, so if you're looking at the duties of the zoning officer, it enumerates right now currently five different duties. So when it comes to duty number three, it says, "Issue written notices to persons in violation of the zoning ordinance and as circumstances warranted, either A, issue a summons for written violation returnable in municipal court, or B, upon the express authority of the City Council and with the assistance of the Corporation Council, file in the Superior Court a complaint to terminate the violations or prevent its continuance." It's with that duty we seek to amend, really by actually splitting up that duty into three different ones, kind of clarifying for the first point, so which would be the new one, of issue written notices to persons in violation of the zoning ordinance, again, making that very clear that the zoning officer, you know, issues violations. The second one then, as circumstances reads as circumstances warranted, issue some summons for the violations returnable to municipal court. And then the fifth one would be, upon the express authorization of the City Council and the Law Director, file complaint within Superior Court. So this kind of just breaks down the duties of a, of the zoning officer's issuance of tickets with that on the process of what happened. So that she could issue a notice on that, she could issue immediately a violation, and then upon the direct authorization of council, you know, issue, you know, with the Law Director's ability, a violation to Superior Court. So those are the changes that we're proposing for the duty of the zoning officer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Any questions from our professionals, our Board professionals? No. Are there any members of the audience that have a question of Mr. Skilander regarding this presentation? Yes, Mr. Resigno. Mr. Skilander, if you wouldn't mind, just take the other microphone for a moment. Thank you.
I'm just curious. So the violation then will go to the City Council for a vote, but if, in other words, let's say, I have a violation, then does it have to wait till the next City Council meeting before a violation?
So currently, right now, if the, for the process, the zoning officer has to issue you a notice of violation, you have some time to correct that violation, and then depending upon the circumstances from there, the zoning officer then issues a court ticket if it's not abated, or if the matter is very egregious, can go to the City Council, ask the authorization from there, you know, to go to Superior Court instead of to municipal court. What this is doing then is kind of splitting up that process and giving the zoning officer the flexibility to immediately issue tickets, you know, violations, you know, to municipal court, still give, have the ability to issue a notice of violations, you know, as a warning, let's just call it that way. But if it is egregious, then the matter of, again, going to, asking the authorization for the City Council, and if the City Council then warrants it, you know, going to Superior Court. So in the rare circumstances that it would happen, where the zoning matter would have to go to Superior Court, they would be, in that matter, yes, there would be two meetings from the City Council authorizing it, and then, you know, after the issuance of the tickets, then the abatement of the matter in front of the municipal council through Superior Court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Okay. Commissioners, any comments before we move on? Okay. So, Mr. Kim, is there any action from the Board?
The Board should vote. There's a requirement under the municipal land use law that anything that relates to planning and development should be reviewed by the Planning Board, and although it's not an official action by us, it would create a record. So we're going to do a resolution, and that's why we are giving them the letters "Aye" through "L" tonight.
Okay.
So that way, we have preservation of this, so that in the future, if anybody wanted to make sure that the requirements of the MLUL had been followed. So let's have a vote on that one.
Okay.
A motion and a second, and then a resolution at the end.
Okay, sounds good. I'll move. And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skilander, we're ready for the next one.
Okay. So the next one, again, is an amendment to Chapter 30, Article 20, short-term rental updates. So this ordinance was recently put in front of the Board and the City Council on this. We're back in front of you tonight, really to kind of help just create some Scrivener's errors and also kind of address some, you know, little type, little procedural issues that, as we were going through the proceduralization of creating our application for the short-term rental application, kind of noticed some difficulties and, you know, points of clarity that we just wanted to make with that. So the amendments really tonight, you know, are pretty simple. You know, in the definition sections, just kind of clarifying a colon to a semicolon. The, you know, for the short-term rental and the number of days, just spelling out 60 days, and then there was a typographical error, also in the same short-term rental definition of quest, or should have said guests. And then when it came to the number of days to the short-term rental, you know, with the permitted classifications for it, kind of clarifying for the two and, the two units of a multi-dwelling, where there were four, there were three listed items in four and five on the, so for two dwelling units in a multi-dwelling unit, just making sure that they were all conjunctive, of making sure the word "and" was added between A, B, and C. There was another typo in that same section in Article 2, where it says, "Accept as provide," again, clarifying, "provide And then, again, clarifying in the third section here on the short-term rental permit application fee, where it talks about the City of Bayonne's land use regulations, just clearly defining that as, you know, specifically the planning and development regulations of Chapter 33. Also in that section too, where it talks about that the short-term rental permit is valid for one year, just while we spelt out "one year," also clarifying that for, that a numeric "one" is there too, for the public's benefit. We also came for, then, in the fourth section regarding the application process, there was a section there that talked about identifying the number of parking spaces. This one would probably be the biggest substantial change to the ordinance, that talked about identifying the on-street parking directly adjacent to the premiseses. Again, and just from a policy perspective on that for this application, we're more concerned on the parking spaces that are to be provided on the property, and, you know, kind of consistent with the city's policies on the guest passes here. We didn't want to make a reliance that there would be, that public parking on the street would be constantly provided. So, you know, removing that so that the applicant would have to make a, you know, a drawing or showing that the parking spaces for short-term rental would only be on the premiseses, and there'd be no off-street parking. And then also, then further along on the requirements, where it came to in the section that, talking about an owner's agreement, we switched that agreement to an affidavit, so that the owner or the applicant making the presentation, or the representations to the city on their uses of the property for short-term rental, there wouldn't be a formal agreement, there would just be a statement in the form of an affidavit. And then, again, in Section 5, kind of clarifying on the issuance of the permit and the appeals period, it just said, within a period of, you know, 30 days if being denied, we're clarifying that to say 30 calendar days there, and then that if the applicant is denied, that there'd be 10 business days to appeal the decision in writing. And then, within the 30 calendar days, the business administrator or the designee can hear and decide the appeal. So we're just clarifying the terms of business days and calendar days in that section. And then also, again, on the operational end of this, still clarifying the number of, in the calendar days on there. So in the event of, you know, any complaints, talking about the timeframes here, if the city receives a complaint, it just said originally, it said 10 business days to appeal, kind of keeping consistent with the appeals period procedures. You know, we're making it consistent with those changes just mentioned, to, again, 30 calendar days, you know, to hear the appeal, and then also for the business administration or the designee of the business administrator to hear and decide the appeals. You know, so those are the changes that we're proposing, while very minor to it, just for consistency's sake, for, you know, consistency with the municipal land use law on this, want to present these changes to the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Board professionals? Okay, no questions. Are there any members of the public that have a question regarding this presentation? Okay, let's see, any, any members of the public that wish to make a statement regarding this presentation? Okay. Commissioners, comments? Okay. We'll move to the vote. I'll second, I'll second. Has to be a first. I'll move. Do I have a second? And on the vote, please.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye, thank you. All right.
Next on the agenda is item number eight, P-24-001K, Planning and Development Regulations Amendment, Presentation of Amendments to the City of Bayonne Ordinance, Vacant Property Signs. Mr. Skilander.
Sure. So on this one, just for the sake of clarity, this is not actually within Chapter 33. This is within Chapter 17 of the Property Maintenance Code on this, for dealing with vacant signs and storefronts on that. So within that section, there's a sign for, there's a section for vacant properties, and within that, we're looking to basically add, you know, require that if it's a vacant property, that a sign must be posted on the nearest street or sidewalk with the property owner's contact information, which would be their name, address, telephone number, and the person responsible for the day-to-day supervisions, if the, that person is different from the owner. It also talks about the, the sign can be no smaller than eight inches by 10 inches, and if there are, you know, again, any exterior grounds that include, you know, yards, fences, sidewalks, alleyways, and retaining walls, driveways, that they're well-maintained and free from trash and debris and, you know, weeds. This also will give then the ability from the, for the zoning officer or anyone responsible for the Property and Maintenance Code to issue such violations if, you know, found that vacant property owners do not have the sign on there or are not maintained properly.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Any questions? No? Okay. Are there any members of the public that have a question? Any comments from the public? Commissioners? Okay. I'll make a motion.
We don't have to on this one because it's Chapter 17.
Gotcha.
Rather than 33 or 35.
All right. Then noted for the record. Thank you. So we'll move on to the next one, P-24.
We will do that. Item number nine, Presentation of Amendments to the City of Bayonne Ordinance Special Meeting Fee.
Very simple. It's a one-line item. Updating the special meetings fee from $4,000 to $5,000.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? Questions from the public? Or questions from our professionals? Questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Or Commissioners? Okay, and this one, no vote?
Vote on this one.
A vote. I'll get it right eventually. Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
And on the vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skilander.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Item number 10, P-24-013, Presentation of an Amendment to the Redevelopment Plan, Original P-10-001, for property located at 26 North Street and City Block 297, Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. Mr. Slough?
Good evening, Mr. Slough.
Good evening. I apologize for my voice. It seems to have left me a bit today. Try to grind it out.
We appreciate that.
There are two on for tonight. The first one is the 26 North Street Redevelopment Plan Amendment. And so the presentation is dated for today. And this plan was prepared by Sue Mack and myself, related to the various ideas that the redevelopers has put forth over a number, well, basically over the last year. And this also will address some legal matters between the municipality and the redeveloper and the owner of the property. So why are we amending the plan? Its context is helpful here. It's on North Street. North Street parallels Route 440 in this part, southern part of Bayonne. And to the right, we have the 8th Street, the terminus of the Hudson-Bergen Light Rail System. Then there's a little bit of a shopping center, and then we have this site. It was previously known, some of you may know it, as the Pagano's site. It's a significant redevelopment area. There is still an easement for the railroad line behind it, so we have to respect that easement that's to the south, plus you also have the highway, the highway also. So it does modify this area. It's within what's this broad rehabilitation plan we call, we have what's called the 8th Street Rehabilitation Plan. So this kind of carves out this particular property for special treatment beyond what the 8th Street Rehabilitation Plan does, and gives it a specific plan for the redevelopment of this property. So it has a lot of good qualities. It's near the mass transit site, hence needs less of a parking requirement, something similar that we did for a small site on Broadway south of Route 440 that you may recall, I think that was 218, 222 Broadway. And we also would have something to improve the streetscape along there, since it's been vacant or industrial use for some time. And we would also have a more context-sensitive design here. The Planning Board may recall that this is a site proposed for 222-story towers. This plan reduces that height to 14 stories, and there's been a concept plan done by the owner, and also, just to show what it might look like, and also, they're still working on various designs, and it may not be a 14-story, but that's the limit that you can go with in this plan. So we, as with most plans, have a purpose, a vision for the site. We have various zoning regulations that apply to it. You've kind of seen this drill before and how we put context to it. So this gives a view, a street view from Google, of what the site looked like back in July of 2022, and it has looked like that for some time. And so this would redevelop that site into an attractive, primarily residential building, but would also allow on the street, and also to the second floor, if necessary, non-residential development. And there's a host of uses that would be allowed on that, and a more limited set of uses that would be allowed on the second floor, and that would also have integrated parking with the development. The whole total tract size is just under two acres. The vision, as I said, up to 14 stories, as many as 500 dwelling units. It would be studio, one- and two-bedroom apartments. There, as I said, an internal parking deck. There would also be the parking for any commercial uses that would be proposed, and what we would be looking for on the ground floor in particular would be things that are related, not only for the residents of the development, but also people in the neighborhood. And it would also help support people using the rail station, like we have next door to it in the little shopping center that's immediately adjacent. And so these are the uses that are permitted on the ground floor only. Well, there are some additional ground, above-ground floor uses that are allowed, so that's a little off in terms of what that says. But there are some, so like you could still have some medical office on the second floor, and you could have a few personal services, some, like you could, for example, have a barber shop on the second floor if necessary. And so there are other uses that, you know, we can have home professional offices that go along with the city's regulations, and you can have also, as conditional uses, if you could have an educational, like if you had a supplemental educational use in there if people wanted, or if you had like college training, you could have that kind of thing in the, in the building also. So a wide variety of useful purposes. You could also have a doctor's office or a dentist's office in the ground floor. Set limits on how much that, how big those spaces are, but instead of having a whole plethora of them, you have to have at least 4,000 square feet. So you're not going to have, you know, 10 doors along the front of the development. You'd have more, probably more like cafe, or a restaurant, or an, or an office in several of those uses. So there are limitations in terms of the minimal size and then the maximal size. So if you look at the area, the minimum unit sizes are fairly consistent with what we've looked at in previous redevelopment plans, certainly more recently. So these just set the minimums. I think the key piece here is on the rear yard, maintaining 10 feet. For one thing, we don't want contractors working on the outside of the building to be anywhere near the catenary system for the light rail system. So that's part of the reason we have the setback. Plus, the railroad itself has requirements for how far away you can have any of the building, which this meet more than meets. The other part is the maximum lot coverage. As conceived, the plan does meet that today. So there would be some open space. So there would be some open space related to that where the building is not covering the entire lot. As also conceived now with concept plan, they would have amenities also on top of the parking garage deck and probably on the roof. And this plan would allow amenities, amenities on the roof or an outdoor recreation space or an indoor recreation space on the roof. So vehicular parkings are at one space per dwelling unit, and that's in recognition of the fact that it's really a stone's throw from the light rail station. We have graduated requirements where we have other places that are further away, but in this location, because of that access, in our view, it's not necessary to have as high a standard. The other thing you may recall that when we were looking at that Broadway project is that, that is at a point nine space per unit because of its immediacy to the Bergen Light Rail Train Station. And it's also consistent with what DOT has been looking for in transit-oriented development, which is what this is. Then we also have minimum bicycle parking requirements, which are consistent with the ones that we have in other places. So then we have some design standards, and this is a concept plan that was prepared by the landowner. Won't necessarily be this, but it's kind of conceptually what it could be. And this is looking at it, say, if you were standing across the street from the train station, the rail station, and looking at the corner of this property. So that's this view. And this has some balconies, and you can see that there's an indentation at about the second floor. And so that's, that's the floor where the parking is. Then this has shops and so forth at the ground floor level, but not the entire ground floor level. The, so there's also two sets of design standards where if we get a building over ten stories, they have to do additional things related to the design of the building. So if it's under ten stories, consistent quality and finish in all the sides. After all, we're going to have thousands of people passing by this on Route four-forty, and we want to have a good, good backside as well as a good front side to this building. Plus, we're going to have people in the train seeing it, too. So we wanted to put its best foot forward for the aesthetic quality of Bayonne. Secondly, it has to have a top, middle, and base contemporary design with building articulation. With the architects that are involved, we're sure that they can accomplish these, these factors. A color palette consistent with Bayonne's traditional color palette and certain materials on the outside. And of course, then the, the planning board in a site plan context would review all of those architectural designs as it typically does. Then we would also have streetscape standards. These would be fairly consistent with what we do today. Street trees along the frontage. We would have areas where had to be cleared for the pedestrians to get past. We're going to try to encourage them to do street furniture so they can have places for people to sit. They'd obviously have to comply with other things. Certainly if they have any kind of personal sales or services, trash cans are, are going to be crucial, keep the street clean. And then we'll have other things, those bike racks, places to sit, particularly if there's any kind of eating or drinking establishment that's located there. So those are the fairly consistent. Then we'll have these landscaping standards, which you have seen before from us. And then obviously, we're going to have other standards for the other landscaping of the rooftop structures here. And then that's essentially the, in a nutshell, the components of the redevelopment plan for Twenty-Sixth North Street. We did, there was a reasonable amount of dialogue with the, with the owner of the property on this question. And some of that became because of their looking at plans that they had previously submitted. And so there was compromises made to come to what you see today in the plan. Now with this, with the plan, I don't know if, Alicia, did this little memo get sent, given to? Uh, like at three-thirty? Yeah. So there were, after we sent this in on June the fourth, there was additional dialogue that the city's redevelopment attorney, Mr. Usikala, had with both the landowners attorney and a couple of their, landowners attorney to landowners regarding some additional things within the plan. So what I did was wrote up a couple of things that they requested and Mr. Usikala agreed to for changes in the plan. So I don't know if, did you guys get this plan? The big, the whole thing? Or did you?
The original plan, yeah.
Right.
The amendment plan, yes.
Right. So there's no amendment yet that's been sent out to anybody. What I'd like to go through is there's three areas. One's a, one's a typo where on the first page, we have the wrong block in the third paragraph. So that says block two-thirty-seven. That needs to be two-ninety-seven. So that one's fairly simple. And then on page four, it's like follow the bouncing ball, right? We don't have to sing at least today. And with my voice, you definitely want to hear that. So on page four, we have some disconnect on page four related to the size of non-residential uses. And there it says not exceeding five thousand square feet, but what had been decided earlier and is in further back in the plan is a four thousand minimum and a seven thousand not to exceed or maximum. So we have this disconnect that's on page four. So page four, under principal permitted uses, and generally speaking, I prefer not to have a dimensional or area standard in use section. It should be in a different section, just conceptually. So that where it has, it says Twenty-Sixth North Street rezoning, zoning regulations, principal permitted uses. So in that first section, it would be changed to say, "Commercial establishments located on the ground floor or second floor, excepting second-floor appliance, radio, television, and video repair shops, self-service laundry, primary liquor service establishment, and neighborhood restaurant." All those uses are allowed in the C-one neighborhood commercial district, so hear me out, or as permitted in the C-one neighborhood commercial district. But in this instance, we don't want those uses on the second floor. In addition to those uses permitted in the C-one neighborhood commercial district, the following uses, subject to the same limitations, shall be permitted on the ground floor. And then for there, you have this list, art gallery, art performance instruction studio, bar, brewery, blah, 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 commercial and recreation, other drinking, we must want a lot of drinking establishments, health club, and offices, restaurant, shared workspace, and tavern. So all those uses would all be ground floor uses. So there's a more limited palette of things you could put on the second floor. So we would recommend changing the, the wording ahead of the uses in A-one on page four to reflect that. And it takes out that five thousand square foot maximum, and it's a four thousand limit and a seven thousand, which comes up a little later on. And that is in, on paragraph T on page twenty in there that has the four thousand square feet as an additional standard that they would have to meet in the zoning regulations and not to exceed seven thousand. Then the third change is on page nine, which has to do with paragraph M. And that has to do with how does this plan relate to the other regulations that we have in the city? So paragraph M, as it stands now, says, "The requirements of the Twenty-Sixth North Street Redevelopment Plan is applied to block two-ninety-seven lot three shall supersede the requirements of chapter thirty-three, planning and development, and chapter thirty-five, zoning of the code of the City of Bayonne." And instead, what this, just to clarify things, there had been a prior redevelopment plan for the site. So what this says and, and what we propose is that the requirements of the Twenty-Sixth North Street Redevelopment Plan is applied to block two-ninety-seven lot three shall supersede any prior redevelopment plan for the site. The Eighth Street Rehabilitation Plan, remember, that's the overall plan for this big area, insofar as it applies to this property, the requirements of chapter thirty-three, planning and development, and chapter thirty-five, zoning of the code of the City of Bayonne, except as otherwise provided for herein. And the reason we put that last phrase in is because this makes reference to the signed standards in, in the zoning code. So we didn't want that disconnect. So there's, we refined what the relationship to other land development ordinances meant with this particular plan. So those are the three changes we would seek your endorsement for in the plan that was sent to you from June the fourth. So if that was acceptable, then that's my presentation on Twenty-Sixth North. If you have questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Slough. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Any questions from our board professionals? Ms. Mack?
And I, I know that the redevelopment conference was Friday, and John's comments came in later, and I, too, would ask the board to consider John W. Casala's comments because it is always good to have our redevelopment council take a last look. And this, this, this plan was, was complicated in some ways with, with, it was complicated. But I, but I wanted to, I wanted to say one thing about rehabilitation and redevelopment plans in general that speaks to this plan. We adopted the original Eighth Street Rehabilitation Plan in 2015, and one of the major goals of it was to incentivize development in, in Bayonne. And I would go back to the Eighth Street Plan, and as you look at it, there are numerous sites, the AMP, Brass Foundry, all along, all along the area where the Eighth Street Station is, and also along Broadway, where the Eighth Street Plan was the impetus for this development. But what the plans always say is, is that if you do not incentivize, you should take a second look. I am told many times that the Eighth Street Plan was a vision of what could have happened then, but market conditions change. Sometimes you, you put visions in and they're just not achievable. So I congratulate the developer for coming back in, taking a relook, and really saying, "This is what we can actually build. This is what we can actually finance, and this is what we can build with, with, for the community and for the citizens of Bayonne." So this one I wanted to just comment on because it's, it's nine years old. It's nine years since we adopted that plan and this was in it, and there were some amendments. But I think everybody feels now that this is a very doable, a very thought-out, and a very good thing for the neighborhood to actually have it built. So I did want to, I wanted to thank Brian. It was a little bit of a bobble weave at the end, and I apologize that you didn't have written, everything written about the comments. I like you to have that so you actually can physically see it, but I just wanted to add those comments. And I think this plan also has a provision to be phased, and I think we're going to get a rendering on some of that, so maybe in the final documents, we can also include, include those things.
Yeah. If it comes in in time, then we could certainly add that in.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could pop, we could pop in a different concept plan.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that have questions regarding Mr. Slough's presentation? Okay. Don't go too far, Mr. Slough. I don't know that there are any questions, but let's just check if there are any comments, whether they be pro or con regarding this. Okay. Seeing none, commissioners, any comments? Okay. At this point, I would make a motion to approve this.
Yep. And we need a second.
Second.
And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiermonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella.
And just to clarify, that was with the modifications proposed.
Yes, with the modifications.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next.
Next on the agenda is P dash twenty-four dash oh-one-four. Presentation of an amendment to the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor South Redevelopment Plan for property located in city block seven-five-one, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. Mr. Slough.
Thank you.
Okay. We're ready for the next one.
Yes. So the Harbor Station South Redevelopment Plan, this is an area where the planning board approved, under the Amgenesh application, a twenty-six-story tower development for residential on Chosen Few Way and, I guess, East, East Fortieth Street. Since that time, there's been some additional thought and discussion about that super block, if you like. And let me give some context. Again, Sue Mack and I worked on this. And give some context. So here, the, just to orient you, at the very bottom of that picture inset is, is the water. And, and so that's the very edge of the former military ocean terminal at Bayonne. And then this was the area that was called Harbor Station South, and then just to the north of it, Harbor Station North. To the upper left of that is the Costco. And then to the lower left is where Lidl is, and I forget that it's a Bay, one of the Bayviews, or I forget. Notwithstanding that, the area bounded in red in the Bayonne redevelopment plans has been known as Block HS Two. And so on the northerly side is East Fortieth Street. On the kind of westerly side is Chosen Few Way. On the southerly side is Goldsboro. And then to the easterly side is Flagship. So that creates this bounded, almost rectangular, square-shaped block. So right now, that block has the fire station for Bayonne. And this will also be the subject of the GDP amendment that was carried from today to, to next month, the Mahaloaxmi application, urban renewal application. So all of this is being kind of relooked at again. And the main purpose behind the amendment is that this would become kind of the high-rise district for Bayonne in the same kind of way that Journal Square is becoming kind of a high-rise district in Jersey City. And so towards that end, and some of it is, some of it is simply because buildings of a certain size carry a lot of weight. And to be able to carry that weight, they have to get down to bedrock, and bedrock here is at best eighty-five feet, but some of it's almost twice that distance. So to do that, you have to do substantial foundations. And so that great foundation cost has to be carried typically by my, more stories of development above, but also in the sense that in Bayonne here, we're creating something new. And it's in an area where you're creating a new neighborhood, and there isn't a new neighborhood to, other older neighborhoods to disturb. So in terms of kind of a city planning exercise, this is the best place to have high-rise buildings. Not Manhattan high-rise buildings, but Jersey high-rise buildings. So that's mainly what this amendment is about. And so, this one's a little different in the sense that it might be a little harder to follow along if you had the whole thing. But we've, there are certain things. So this is kind of a cut and replace out of the existing Harbor Station South Redevelopment Plan, which has had several amendments already. I guess, yeah, it's had two amendments before this. At one point, this was also an area that was proposed for the same height of buildings, but didn't, it was, didn't, wasn't followed through with by municipal council at that time. So, one of the things we're doing here is revising some of the descriptions of the redevelopment area in the plan that exists today. We're revising the development regulations and other site work standards that go along with that. We're revising the building design requirements because we're getting taller buildings. And we also want to make sure that we're not creating a monolithic block. Not like we're having this block and we're just going to have buildings rise up from it, but that there's articulation and separation so that it maintains views and light and air through them and down to the ground. So that's something that's important, to maintain also an ambiance that ordinary Bayonne citizens can enjoy. So, that's, that's the purpose of this amendment. So, it only applies to HS2. It doesn't apply to the other ones. This redevelopment area, the total redevelopment area of the Harbor Station South is about 72 acres. This part of it is a little under 24. So it's about a little over a third of the area involved. So, at the present time, the uses allowed in here include townhouses, one, two, one and two-family, and then stacked townhouses. Not sure if you've seen that. That's where you actually have a townhouse over a townhouse, and it's a four-story building. But that's really not what's contemplated here at this stage. It would be a more dense development than that. So those would be removed. But we would add some other things that could be put into mixed-use buildings. So, like we have other parts of Bayonne, and particularly on the peninsula where we're encouraging non-residential uses in the ground and the second floors. We would also add other things here, such as medical and life science uses, science, senior living. And one of the things it doesn't have in there today is a standard language on accessory uses. Always a good catch-all because, as planners, we can't think of every accessory use that might, might become, over time, something that everyone's used to having. But you didn't list it because 10 years ago, nobody thought of it. So this way, we cover that with accessory uses customarily incidental to a principal use within the same block. So this would now, instead of just having high-rises allowed in just a portion of Block HS2, it would allow them in an entire development block. One of the things it does as well is recognition of where apartment sizes are headed in terms of size, is a reduction. Remember, the last, the, the 26 North has studios at 500. This has studios at 450. So this has slightly smaller sizes there. It's really more of a Manhattan-style design than what we would see in the Bayonne proper, if you like, the developed part of Bayonne. So it's slightly changed there. So what this does is it raises the maximum stories from 25 to 50 stories. And it creates a maximum height limit of 625 feet to accomplish that. So that's an average of 12 and 1/2 feet per floor. Now, the residential floors are likely to be less than that. But then, the bottom floor, the bottom two floors are likely to be significantly taller. And the top floors likely will be taller as well just because that's how design and floor heights work, typically in larger-scale buildings. So the 625 feet would allow them to accomplish that. And so you can see its relationship to the other maximum heights that we have. So like in HS4, you can also do 25 stories with a 300-foot height limit. And you can see its relationship to the other ones in the blocks around it. So as I said, this creates a high-rise district on Block HS2. So we have additional standards. So the way that we're requiring this is that when we have buildings that are over 10 stories, they would be designed as what we call podium buildings, where you, you have a base design, and then you have towers that come up from that base. So you don't have the entire block filled in with buildings. One of that is so that people on Avenue E, who are raised up, you may recall, will still have views through the building to wherever they're looking at today. So it's, it's not, it's not going to be completely blocked by people who are in high-rise towers. It also creates a space on the top for amenity uses. And you may recall that from the Amgenesh application last year, for those on the board, that that space was used for grilling stations and a pool, and reading nooks, and gathering spots, and a cocktail bar, and a bunch of things for the residents to create kind of this nice ambiance space that basically people seek out today in more expensive accommodation. And so, that's, requires this. So then, as we said earlier, the design and scale and the orientation of the towers have to continue to allow adequate light and air and visual access down to the street level. So, I believe that that can be accomplished by the architects on the project. Might be a little bit of a challenge, but I think they're up to it. You're also allowed to have, within the tower setback, you can have balconies, you can have other things that protrude so people can have a view. Though, if you're scared of heights, you might not want to have that particular apartment. So, it's not a long, you know, it's not a long plan amendment. So effectively, is intended to make these particular changes. The other aspects of the plan would remain in place.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slough. So, just to put it in context, I have a question. The area of the region we're talking about, how many buildings could potentially go on that?
So there are a number of development blocks, number within there. So the HS2 is made up of lots. Let me see here. We've got, hmm, seven, eight, 10. And then there's a, there's, there's 10 development blocks. And then there's a block, then there's a lot, sorry, 10 development lots. Then there's a lot that's a street lot. So, if I recall correctly, there were two towers on the Amgenesh property. So I would say, you're probably looking at perhaps 14 at the upper end.
Okay.
But it will really depend on, again, market conditions.
Okay, thank you. And if, with, I know this, you know, this is still an amendment. It still has to, to move forward.
It does.
But, any, any considerations to, you know, if 50 stories is the top, what prohibits, let's say, all 14 buildings from just being this big block of 50 stories?
Right.
You know, I'm just thinking streetscapes. You think of downtown Jersey City, and there's some variability to that.
There is, yes. So, there's requirements that, so there's goals and objectives that are in it. There's also, we would have to be concerned about wind tunnel effects between the buildings. So when they would come in for site plan approval, that's one of the things that I'm going to seek from the applicant, is that they have a wind tunnel study that shows what the effects of the ground level are going to be from the spacing of the buildings. I originally had a specific standard. They asked for more flexibility in the design. And there's something to that. But they're going to have to demonstrate to me and the board that they understand the relationship of those building towers to both the podium and to the street, and to the light and air that's established within there. And they're going to need to do that just to be able to either rent or sell the units to. Because if people are denied from having any kind of positive light from their apartments, they're not going to want to buy them. If they're only facing north and never getting any light into their apartment, they're not going to want to buy it. So they're going to have to be keenly aware of how they're going to do that. So I don't expect the towers to be, you know, square pieces arising. They're going to, they're going to have movement to them in the sense that they'll have angles. And they'll, they may be stepped. And, which I think you have seen, buildings like that recently constructed in the region, where the buildings are stepped and it gives people terraces to look out. The Gamal application, for example, has stepped terraces for their, for their apartment units. And so I would anticipate that while we have this number, we're not going to see buildings that fully maximize the building envelope for those towers. Because I don't think it would be saleable. It wouldn't be marketable for people.
Okay, thank you. And then, naturally, I know we're just talking about an amendment to the plan, but any, further down the line, any developer would still be subject to traffic studies, correct?
Yes, and so that was a key issue here. And that's one of the reasons we have in here, the fact that people have to be able to get on and off the peninsula. And right now, there's limited ways to do that. And there's limited capacity, both on either Route 440 or if they go north and get on the turnpike. And, and so, we're going to have to, they are going to have to, and the city's going to have to address that capability. And so, that's why there is a caveat in here about the number of units. Just because it allows that size of a building doesn't necessarily mean there will be sufficient capacity to build it out at that maximum building capacity with a certain number of units, yet have, say, a permit that allows you to build that number of units from the state agency.
Okay. Yeah, that was my, that was my question and concern because looking at comparable building heights in, you know, surrounding areas, you know, that could be up to 750 units, things like that. And would the roadway be able to take that capacity is a question that I had.
Right, so, I mean, so we're, you know, the city continues to work on the ferry plan. We're having, there's a traffic study ongoing now that, that the DOT has funded for us to look at those issues. And so that's why in, on page three at the top, we, we have changed that language in traffic and transportation. And it, it's likely to require more participation with the developer, from the developers to solve these issues.
Okay.
Because it's in their best interest to do so. Otherwise, their potential tenants, they may be able to live there, but they can't leave. If they can't leave, that's a bit of a problem, I think.
I would say so. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slough? Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Locke?
I was going to ask for, the H2 zoning, is that just particularly currently like for Block 751? And is Block 751 currently just like one assembled lot? Or is it projected to be kind of like subdivided into smaller lots?
Right now, it is subdivided into several lots. I guess there's 11 or 12. It doesn't mean that they'll stay within that configuration. So, part of that answer will come with the General Development Plan Amendment that's proposed. And you, on current trajectory, you'll see that next month. Don't know if that will continue that way. But, you know, because that plan's been kind of, was actually filed last August, if I remember correctly. So that's also, I think, the Planning Board needs to give that some close scrutiny also because that effectively says general development plan will be how we're going to actually develop out Block HS2 now that the plan gets amended. To some degree, finishing that work in the GDP is dependent on this plan. And that GDP becomes the basis for, excuse me, that becomes the basis for, okay, this lot is going to have this level of development. This lot will have this level of development. This lot will have this level of development. And, and this is the road network. And the road network has to be developed at a certain time, which gets, ties into the redevelopment agreement and any amendments to that redevelopment agreement that would need to be undertaken. So it's all, it's all tied together and occurs in a certain sequence.
Okay, sounds good.
And we have to be, you know, we have to be cognizant of all that when it comes. And you have to be cognizant of that when it comes before you, which is soon, I would say.
And then, is this, this is only currently for Block 751, right? This H2 is on?
This is only for that block. It does not apply to any of the other blocks in Harbor Station South or anything else on the peninsula.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions? Our board professionals, any questions? Sure, Ms. Mack.
And one or two, you know, you, you think about it, when, when people bring up our points. But Madam Chairwoman had discussed really the, the number of units. I think she was talking about how many buildings you could get on HS2. I, I phrased it a little bit different, but I didn't really know the answer. The density controls. I, I know that the, I know we'll be doing more of the GDP next month. The GDP set the limit on how many units you could have in, in Harbor Station South. And so, I'm assuming that you've built in some sort of density control that we don't exceed the GDP number.
I think the GDP will set a density limit as well.
Okay.
That's what I would expect it to do.
Okay, that's important. And I, I just want to-
We didn't, so the density limitations were not changed by this amendment. They're the same as they were or are in the plan today.
So, so going higher does not mean that they'll build additional units?
Correct.
At least from the plan.
From the plan.
And Brian, I, I just, I know we talk a lot. DOT is not funding any study on the highway or the highway access or the highway.
Well, what was the-
We have, we currently in, we've been doing this plan with you since 2008. So that's even longer than the ever plan, but, yeah, I just-
There was some funding, but it wasn't for that purpose?
No, it wasn't. So, I'm just clarifying it for the record so that people don't think that, that there is that funding. When MOPB was developed, it's the Peninsula in Bayonne Harbor, it was developed with one waterfront development permit from DEP and one highway access permit from DOT under a 3.2 federal million-dollar grant from the federal government that DOT administered. So all of these permits, including the master plan, were paid for ultimately by, by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, all of them. Currently, the New Jersey Department of Transportation is funding a study on the pedestrian bridge over 440, which has a traffic component in it that shows the impact of traffic now and in the future. So they know, they know a little bit more about the impact of what's happening out here because that study is completed. And so do I. So, they've funded that. What we're trying to do is move into a new phase of the highway access permit, which should be funded by other, others, but not by DOT, which we then have to go in for a permit with, permit to them. And I think that's the issue that, I, I was before city council the other night on this, and I said, "We were attempting to go and do traffic studies to see how all of this will work." You know, so, but that hasn't happened to date. So Brian did put that language in. It was in all of the former. This, I think this is the fourth, this is the fourth amendment to the Harbor Station Plan. fourth, this is the fourth amendment to the Harbor Station Plan. I believe it's four, right? Four, five?
Well, I had third.
Well, third, I think, but third or fourth. I presented all the others, at least on this, but what that basically said, they all said it in it. So it's been consistent since 2008 in all of the amendments that we would work with our state partners, our state agencies. And now, currently, we're going to have more, we're going to have the Federal Transit Administration with the ferry. So we are working on it, but I think it's critical for us, just, I think, just as the chairperson was talking about, you put it in a plan and you think you can do it, and we want to make sure that we also realize that we can do it responsibly. We want them to be able to build responsibly. They do build responsibly, but we have to comply with the underlying last 30 years of plans out there, and if we're really going to have to maximize the success. I did tell the City Council the other night that I recommended the 50 stories, but I did tell them also that I felt strongly that we have to tie in the fact that we are going to do the work with the agencies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mack. At this point, we'll open it up to questions to the public. Are there any members of the public that wish to come forward with a question? Mr. Resignal, come on up. Okay.
These are big plans. I'm probably, this is not the meeting for this, but can anybody get a traffic light at Goldsberg Drive and Chosen Few Way before we put up a 50-story tower?
Can anybody get a traffic light there?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm saying that this is really big, and I don't think it's a traffic light anywhere in the Omotpi area.
I don't think so.
It's really a free-for-all.
I believe Mr. Skellander, the Director of Planning, would like to comment with regard to that and maybe help out the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Skellander.
Brian, thank you for your presentation on this, sorry to interrupt on this. Yeah. So, just again, for everyone's, for the sake of clarity on this, so on the road network situation here, currently of how these, of how it's called Lot 116, the road network, that is going to be responsibility of the developers pursuant to the redevelopment agreement to build and construct, you know, certain road networks. So obviously, East 40th Street is going to connect to Memorial Boulevard to help alleviate the traffic along with the internal grid network that will have to be built in between the separate block and lots. As when it's coming to the different traffic light studies right now, we are currently working with our special project engineer, Andy Reichel, on that matter. We've already identified certain traffic controls to be implemented in the area to address the traffic concerns with that, along Goldsboro and Chosen Few as a, you know, traffic intersection, and along with other traffic control measures dealing with the Costco traffic. We're in the middle of studying and, you know, making up with a plan to address and alleviate that, you know, but again, part of this also, too, with this plan will help, again, help fund, you know, the road network that is responsibility of the developer to build.
Because it's really quite large, I mean, with the UPS bond at the backside also.
Yeah.
And with the construction, I would, somebody should put down that no construction vehicles have to all come from the back or some other, they cannot come through that Goldsberg Drive and Chosen Few Way area.
I believe there is a restriction on the certain type of uses of trucks along that road network. I don't know off the top of my head as to where they are, but I know for the UPS trucks...
They're all in the backside of it.
Yeah, they're supposed to be in the backside.
I'm just saying, because I'm just, you know, that this is going to be, it's a fine little project, but, woo.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions from the public? Anyone wish to come forward? Okay. I do believe now would be the time for comments from the public, pro or con. Okay, seeing no comments, Commissioner? Oh, I'm sorry. I looked down for one second. Come on up. Question or comment?
Just a comment.
Okay.
I have been a Bayonne resident for about four years now.
Sir.
Oh, Lou DeBarrow. D as in dog, I, B as in boy, A, R, R, O. No problem. Like I said, I've been a Bayonne resident for four years now. I've been living in Manhattan, Edgewater, Jersey City, and the new construction and everything going on honestly has been a place where it's more viable for me to live. I think as a homeowner in Bayonne, new construction and having more commercial spaces and, you know, and more of a community kind of is helpful for me to, just as property value. I'm not really looking at only my interests, but everything in Bayonne kind of gives it more of a place to want to live amongst family, friends, and everything else. So I'm looking forward to hopefully approving for the 50 units.
Mr. DeBarrow, before you sit down, could you give us your address as well?
31 West 46th Street.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Okay.
If you guys want to send me any gifts or anything.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from the public? Okay, Commissioners, any comments? Anyone wish to comment on this?
Okay, real quick, Commissioner Booker here. I just want to echo Brian, I believe it is, your name, Brian?
I am Brian.
Oh, you're Brian, I know you're Brian.
I am Brian, yeah.
Okay, anyway, just to address the traffic situation over there, believe me, there's not a lot of people in the room, and I do agree 100%. I've witnessed on several occasions the congestion that happens between Costco, Starbucks, and the LA Fitness, so there's a lot of traffic with 50 units coming in. But I just want to reassure everybody that, not alone with the planning board and the council, that it is being addressed and it is being looked at. You're not the only one that really is concerned about, but I get a lot of calls for that area. So we definitely have it in a pipeline, and it will be addressed, just so that you know.
Thank you for that. Any other Commissioners? Sure, Commissioner Lack?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I like the idea. I know it's only an amendment, but I like the possible fruit that it could bear, so it's definitely something I'm looking forward to.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no other comments, we will, I will look for a motion to approve. If there are none, I will move. And on the vote.
Commissioner Lack?
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Skellander and Ms. Mack for putting this together. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break before our next presentation, and then we'll be right back. Okay, good evening and welcome back. We will call the meeting back into order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Quintella?
Here.
Commissioner Lack?
Here.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Valoz?
Here.
Chairperson Fiamonte?
Here, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, I believe, number 14.
Number 14, P-23-033, 38 East 25th Street. Site is 38 East 25th Street, Block 191, Lot 6. Applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan, major site plan approval to construct a new three-story building consisting of five residential units involving multiple bulk variants, relief, including side yard setback, minimum lot frontage, minimum lot area, maximum lot coverage, and parking. Mr. Capish.
Good evening, Mr. Capish.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, city professionals, and everyone joining us tonight. I am Paul Capish of Keycheck &amp; Capish, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant 38 East 25th Street LLC. The principal of 38 East 25th Street is a resident of Bayonne, owner of several other local businesses, including TCBY, Mrs. Fields, Wetzel's Pretzels. He's also a new father. Our application this evening is for a three-story building consisting of five residential units located at 38 East 25th Street. Consists of one unit on the ground floor, two units on the second floor, two units on the third floor. And this property is located in the RM High Density Residential District within the Transit Development Overlay District. As Mr. Camisano mentioned, we are requesting several variances associated with this application, including the minimum lot frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum lot area, maximum lot coverage, parking spaces, and positioning of parking spaces in regards to Section 35 17.5 C2, along with any other required variances, approvals, or relief. Given the location of this property being high-density residential within the TDO, which allows for three to six residential units, we believe that this five residential unit project fits nicely. It's directly across the street from an apartment building that's owned by Housing Authority. The adjacent party, the adjacent property to the left is the City Line Building, which is also a large residential building. Also on this street is church and commercial property, which is funeral and cremation service. Behind our property is a parking lot for the Nicholas Areresco School, PS14. So at this time, I'd like to enter our exhibits into evidence, A1 through A23. Oh, thank you, Alicia. So I'll do that now. I request to add another exhibit, A23, which is, it's a, it's a letter from our architect addressing a CME's report.
Okay, thank you.
So now I'll move to enter the exhibits into evidence.
Okay, noted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I would call our first witness, Ahmed Imara, our architect.
And Mr. Capish, if you don't mind, how many witnesses do you anticipate bringing up this evening?
Four. Four witnesses.
Thank you. Good evening.
I do. Sure, Ahmed Imara, A-H-M-E-D, last name is E-M-A-R-A.
Good evening, Mr. Imara.
Good evening. Alicia, could you please bring up the presentation?
And do you want to just qualify? We recognize him, but just for the record, just qualifications.
Can you provide educational and professional background for the board?
Yes, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture degree, and I've been licensed in New Jersey for eight or nine years, and I'm also licensed in New York and Pennsylvania.
Okay, and all licenses are current, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We recognize Mr. Imara. You may proceed. I'm sorry.
But you're not licensed as a professional planner?
I'm not licensed professional planner, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for putting that on the record.
So Mr. Imara, if you'll provide an overview of this project?
It's a culmination of other exhibits. Not new information, it's just graphics on top of plans that we provided. Yes.
Perfect.
Architects, because I'm not a licensed planner?
Yes, yes. Now, perfect.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Okay, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening. This is an application for a five-unit, three-story building at 38 East 25th Street. This is the building that we're proposing on site instead of the current building. If you could please go to the next slide, Alicia. The building is located on East 25th, as we just said, next to the building, it's on East 25th between, can't read anymore, between Avenue E and Broadway. If you go to the next slide, please. As Paul has mentioned, the building is actually across the street from multifamily building. To, one side is also another multifamily building. Behind it is a public parking for the school, and then to the right of us is a single-family residential. If you please go to the next slide, you'll see another view of that, just to see the scale. The building to the left on the screen, there is a six-story on one side and five stories on the other side because of the slope on site. Across the street is the multifamily, and then you can see that church building three buildings down. And this is another view, just to see the area surrounding it, and we can keep going. And this is a quick image of what it looks like today, and that red line is what we're proposing in terms of height. Again, this is the views on both sides from the street. And we'll get to the zone. It's in the RM High Density Zone. It's also within the TDO Overlay or the Transit Development Overlay. And these are the variances that were actually outlined in the planner's reports. And they match the variances that we had highlighted as well, and they're in the civil set as well. So the minimum lot area, which is unchanged, the permitted is 5,000, the existing lot is 3,642. The lot frontage, the standard is 75, the existing lot has 25 feet frontage on the street. And then there comes the minimum side yard. The standard is three, existing is zero, and the proposed is also zero. We keep that same line in the proposed option, as you'll see in a few minutes. And then the combined side yards, existing today is 7.6. We keep it on the ground floor, but above the ground floor, the building goes over the driveway, as you saw on the rendering, and you'll see in the rest of the presentation. And then the maximum lot coverage, okay, is, the permitted is 70%, existing is 100%. And what we're proposing, what we're proposing is 93.5, so it's actually a reduction of what's existing today. But I do want to point out a couple of strategies that we are applying in this, that we're utilizing in this project to reduce the coverage even further from 100% to 93, as said there, but it also could even further go back down to 70%, which is what's standard, and I'll explain that in a few minutes, and we also have the planner to discuss that as well. We can go to the next one. Thank you. This is within walk-in distance from the 22nd Street Light Rail Station. You have the radii right there, the five-foot radius, the five-minute radius, I'm sorry, the 10-minute radius, and it's within the 10-minute radius. It's also within a few bus stops on Avenue C. This is the, on the left side of the screen is the existing site plan, and then on the right side of the screen is the proposed site plan. And the existing site plan, you'll see the, we just labeled the rear property line, so it's clear where that is. The existing two-story building fits within that line that we're labeling rear setback and front setback, and the proposed is also within the front setback and the rear setback, and they're almost identical in massing. If anything, the proposed is actually slightly smaller because it allows for a larger driveway. The current driveway is 7.5 feet, and the proposed driveway is 10 feet. And then we're also adding, as you can see, a tree in the front, and we're adding a green area in the back. One of the, one of the strategies we're also employing is that we're going to be using those two parking spaces in the back and paving them with pervious pavers. So the pervious pavers is something that we've done on other projects in Bayonne as well, and it's a good strategy to reduce your lot coverage, which helps, again, going from a, on the left, as you can see, there was a masonry garage actually in the rear of the property, and that goes away. There's two parking spaces with greenery surrounding them, and the parking spaces will have pervious pavers. If you could please go to the next slide. These are the floor plans, and I'll come back to the pervious pavers in a second, but these are the two... but these are the two floor plans, the cellar, which is an existing space that we're utilizing for mechanical, and the trash room storage, and that would be, that's where the refuse is stored and then taken out on days of pickup. On the ground floor, we have an accessible, or I should say, an adaptable unit per I B C. That is a one-bedroom unit in the front that's accessed from the street. It has its own separate access. The next slide, please, Alicia. And then second and third floor are both typical floors, showing two, two bedrooms, averaging about nine hundred and fifty square feet, or nine hundred and forty-eight, something like that, square feet each. You'll see the configuration here, there's a one-bedroom facing the street and another bedroom facing a light well, and the same thing in the rear. And then the roof has a roof deck, a roof, a green roof of about five hundred and fifty square feet, which I'll, I can take that to the next slide. You'll see that existing is one hundred percent lot coverage. The proposed site plan has the two hundred and five square feet in the back, which are the, the green area around the, around the parking, the parking spots, and then the parking spots themselves being pervious pavers at about three hundred and forty-seven square feet. And then on top of that, we are providing the, the five fifty, five hundred and fifty square feet on the roof deck of green roof. Now, that doesn't eliminate the relief requested, but in, for all intents and purposes, in terms of performance, that, that is a pretty good advancement from what was there before. And that brings us down to about seventy percent lot coverage, taking into account, again, the, the roof, the green roof, and again, our planner will talk to that as well. The next slide are the, the two elevations, the front and the rear. The front, we have brick on the, on the lower side of the, of the building and wood siding on top, and then we have these large windows, which are actually closer to the multifamily side, and smaller windows closer to the residential, the, the, the family home to, next to us. And it's also indicative of the program behind it, because the single windows are actually in bedrooms, and the large triple windows are in the living rooms to bring in a lot of light and air, which is, which is always a healthy, good environment to be in. And then the next two slides are basically showing the sides elevations. We don't have any windows looking to the sides. Because again, we, we, you know, even though we, we can set back a little bit and put windows, I just don't think having light windows are ever a good idea, just for life safety and other purposes. This section shows that there's, the one stair takes you up to the roof for maintenance and, and mechanical purposes. The cellar is, is all the way down, and then you can see the slope on-site, which the civil engineer will also cover. And then we have just the final two images showing the, the scale of the building based on what's around it, and then that driveway and the parking space in the, in the front. And there's one more, I think, slide. Yes. So speaking of some of the, the letters we got from C M E, I know we have the civil engineer, he'll cover most of this. I only want to speak to a couple of points on here, just to clarify things. We do, we do have a variance for the, the parking space in the middle of the lot being closer than three feet to the property. That is, that is accurate. That was something that Rob Russo and C M E had in their report, and I, and he was saying that it needs to be clarified, that this is a variance, and that is accurate, that is a variance that needs to be required. In terms of everything, almost all the points on here were in agreement with C M E's report. I want to clarify one thing, if we can also go back, Alicia, to keep going, I think it's the site plan might show it, or the floor plan, maybe the first floor plan, right there. That's, that's good, actually. So there was a question about the bike rack, if we have it, and if we have it, why do we have it in the parking space? It, it's not in the parking space, actually. On the ground floor, which is the plan on the left, right behind the stair, there is space for the, the bike rack, and then the parking space starts after that. We didn't want to put the bike rack in the front of the building. We felt it's just more appropriate in the back, so you don't have bikes and other things just stored in front of the building. I think it's nicer if we can have just the entrance with, with beautiful lighting and then everything that's stored in the back. The, the one other thing I do want to discuss here is the, the slope. The slope does, in the front, it does comply with A D A, because there was a comment on here, it does, so that first-floor unit is, is a fully adaptable unit that could be turned into an accessible unit if, if, in case a next, a person with disability moves into it and needs it to be changed. That's my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we've just heard from the architect, keeping in mind, we do have three other experts coming up. Are there any questions for the architect? Okay. Down the end, whoever would like to start first?
Well, I'd like to hear some testimony on the lighting that's proposed, since there's eleven lights proposed for the outside of the building. Two of the lights are indicated in a location, are indicated as wall-mounted, but there's no place for that wall to be. So I'd like to hear, and that's in the rear, so I'd like to hear your proposal for lighting for the exterior. Thank you.
Sure. So the, just to clarify, the, the rear mounted lights are mounted on the wall of the building, not, so it's basically at the higher elevation, so it's basically at the bottom of the second floor. If we go to, if we go to the sheet with the elevations, which is, I think, down, yep, right there. So you'll see the two under the windows, under the single windows in the back, they are wall-mounted, but I understand why it could be tricky in site plan. They're wall-mounted, but above, not below. Under, under the building, we do have lights for the parking, and in the front, we have light in the front, and then we have light along the driveway.
By your testimony, you expect that you have adequate illumination for the entrances to the building, as well as illuminating the driveway for both pedestrians, using the driveway as well as the motorist? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have a few questions.
Of course.
Just to clarify, that variance that you noted is correct, but there's also another variance there as well, that you should probably touch on, in terms of the part, the parking and the right-of-way being closer than five feet?
That is, so, I'm sorry, if we go to the site plan? Yeah, it's right there. So the, the, you're talking about the accessible spot? Correct, yes. So that is another variance, we are asking that parking space is the accessible parking space, which is in the front of the building. We, we think that this is still a good solution, because you have an adequate space for the sidewalk, and we're adding a tree in the front, so that area will prevent anybody from basically parking on the sidewalk or backing onto the sidewalk. So that spot is the, is the accessible spot, as well as the E V, because that's also another thing in here, so I might as well answer that. That would be the E V spot, so it is with, it is closer to than five feet to the property line, correct?
Okay. Now, if that is an accessible spot for U C C code, just so you know, it can't be the E V spot as well, so that's something I just want to look into. You might have to relocate that, dependent on the building review permit. Looking at your architectural plans and on the site plans, I didn't see any pervious pavers or green roof proposed. Could you point those out?
No, that is, that is accurate. We, on the plans you have, we don't have those. That is something that was, that was, we, we had talked about and discussed, and then from the report of the planner, and, and one of the suggestions was to look at the impervious coverage, and that's something that our team has, have been discussing. We actually did it on another project also in Bayonne, and, and again, it came from Mr. Slaw and his team, pervious pavers, which was a good idea, so we decided to employ that in here as well. It's not in the plan that you have, you're, you're right, but it will be part of the compliance, if, you know, if this goes through.
Okay, I think then, just depending on how the board acts, if they act favorably, I think the condition of approval should specifically state what you're going to propose in terms of pervious, impervious coverages, just so it's clear for the record.
Yes, and we'll, we'll also, you know, spec exactly the pervious paper that we would be using for your approval.
Okay. And then this last thing, well, just a correction to the C M E memo, only one E V space is required, not four, so I wanted to make sure the board is aware.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Let's see, any other comment, questions? Now we will move to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to know
Go ahead.
In the back jar, in the front also, is a way that you can prevent flooding from rain? How do you want to?
So this is, it's, so in the back, we have the, the green area that's around the, the parking spaces, and that's, and the, and that's where the, the parking spaces themselves will be pervious, so that water will actually go through, and around the parking spaces, that's fully green, there's no pavers, that's just for, for planting. And then the entire site is actually, well, I shouldn't say the entire, but from, from that dotted line in the, you know, closer to the back of the property to the front, it's, it's a direct slope all the way to the front. And we, we, we've had, we've added that, the green area strip also along the accessible parking space. So whatever we have greenery, we've added to be able to prevent flooding, as well as having the roof, the green roof now, which wasn't part of the application, I, I recognize that, but we are adding it because we think it's a good measure. And that's about five hundred and fifty or six hundred square feet of roof, so it's almost half of the roof that's proposed, and that will hold a significant amount of water.
That's a fair word, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And just one last thing, exhibit A twenty-three that you handed out, you responded to section B of the C M E letter, but you didn't respond to section C or D. I just want to make sure that that was intentional, if you, if there are any issues in those sections, the report?
The omission wasn't intentional, but the responses are, we have them, and the civil engineer can speak to them.
Just wanted to clarify.
No problem.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that have a question for our architect? Okay, seeing none? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Capish, you can proceed with your next witness, please.
Thank you, Mr. Imara. No, thanks. Heesham Kamora, our civil engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And if you would provide, oh, if you want to be sworn in first?
I do. My name is Heesham Kamora, spelled H E S H A M. My last name is Kamora, K A M M O U R A. I'm a civil side, a professional engineer. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and seven. I'm also licensed in Pennsylvania and Delaware.
Okay. And have you appeared before this board before?
Back in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome back, we'll accept you as an extra witness. Thank you.
Do you want to provide educational, professional background?
No, we're okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Then, Mr. Kamora, would you please provide your general overview of the site plan, and then kindly address the stormwater management?
Sure. Tonight, I'm going to speak only about the site. I think the architect already covered the building and everything else. So in general, our, our property is located in Lot Six, Block one ninety-one. The property is three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven square feet. It's not that big of a property. The property slopes, can we get the site plans, please? The site plan? It's only one sheet. Site plan package. It was in the beginning. Second sheet. Okay, so it was in the second sheet here. The property in general graded from the south to north, so from the back of the property to the front of the property. The grades is, ranges between two, one and two percent in general. Under existing condition, the property is a hundred percent impervious. The applicant is proposing a reduction in, in the impervious coverage, and as the architect said last minute, we, we decided to go with a green roof, and also brick pavers in the back for the, the two parking spaces. We're providing a driving aisle of a ten-foot width, an A D A, accessible parking space in the front. The, I have prepared a drainage summary sheet. The project is a so the project is a minor, it's not a major development, it's a minor development, since we are not exceeding five thousand square foot of impervious or one acre of disturbance. We are also proposing connections for utilities, since the, the sewer in the street is a combination sewer. We are proposing two connections, one for storm and one for sanitary. Also, there is a connection to the gas line across the street, and the water, water and the sanitary sewer runs basically within the sidewalk. We're also proposing to entirely remove the sidewalk and get a brand-new one, concrete, six inches concrete. We're going to have a depressed curb of eleven foot wide and a full depth, the eleven foot wide will be at the northeast side of the property, and then the rest of the frontage, which is the, the rest of the twenty-five foot, will be a full curb, a full concrete curb. Part of the C M E comments was to, not to so-cut in the sidewalk, so we are proposing to go to the next the next joint in each side of the sidewalk and have it removed, and fully poured of six inches sidewalk. So that's basically what we're proposing here, and I'm hoping for any questions if you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamora. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kamora? Okay, I'll go down the end. Sure.
Just for your reference, the A D A spot in the front, it's going to have to be re-graded right now, you exceed a two percent slope, and for A D A requirements, you need to be two percent running and cross slopes?
I think I did revise the, the spot shots based on the, the new
Okay, just wanted to clarify, because the plan up now, that you're showing, the board doesn't reflect that.
Okay, but I did submit it, all right.
Just, just one comment I had about the retaining wall detail you have on the driveway side. So in order to construct that, it looks like you're going to need a construction easement of some sort, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware and the board's aware.
I'm hoping that the, the applicant will, will ask for that easement prior to construction from his neighbor.
Well, if the board acts favorably, it's going to be something that's going to have to be addressed during the compliance phase, just so you're aware, because I believe your footing goes two to three feet into the neighboring property.
I'm not designing the wall, but somebody else will design it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slaw?
Do you see any impediments to installing the additional pervious pavers or green roof that's proposed by the architect on the site plan?
I have done this before in different projects, and it was, in fact, it, it helped in just seeping the water through the ground and eliminating more generation of runoff to the, to the neighbors and to the street, so based on my previous design, it will help the situation.
Does the, is there significant runoff to the neighboring properties at this time, or is the site drained of the street?
I don't think there is, the, the, the property is very small, it's, it's been 100% impervious as of today. I don't think we have any current issues with the neighbors, and I'm assuming that this is going to continue to be the case, since we are reducing the impervious coverage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Are there any members of the public that have any questions for Mr. Kamora? Oh, sure, come on up. Mr. Kamora, if you can just take this microphone where Mr. Capish is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kamora. This is Hassan Hashmi.
So we just have to get you on the record.
A-H-S-A-N, Hassan Hashmi, H-A-S-H-M-I. You're welcome. Our property is 36 East, and what we are talking about is 38. So what I, I didn't know that, I'm sorry, this is the first time my appearance in such type of court, and I, if I'm a little bit confused, please.
Sorry, if you could just stay near the microphone, maybe you want to angle it down a little, and then just stay next to the microphone, so we can hear you clearly.
Excuse me for that, if, if, thank you.
You're welcome.
So as I said, 36 East is our property, and my nephew Mohammed, he is residing over there with his family. We were concerned, I didn't know that so much work has been done on this paperwork has been, first time I came here, and this gentleman gave it to me, and I was surprised to see that more than 70% paperwork has been done. I was concerned only because of it will block, because in this.
Mr. Hashmi, Mr. Hashmi, over here.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm the board attorney, and I just want to explain to you procedure, because this is the first time you're here.
Thank you, sir.
But at this point, we ask questions of the people that gave testimony, so if you have any questions of the engineer, you can ask them now. Hold on, hold on, I'm not done explaining.
Okay.
And then there's going to be two more witnesses that you can ask questions of. After all of their testimony is in, we're going to give the public an opportunity to make comments, so if you want to say something about the project, that's the right time. But right now, it's just questions.
Okay, no, no, no question about this, this is their.
Okay, so then, why don't you?
Thank you for guiding me, so I will come later on.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't believe we have any other questions, so that brings us to your third witness.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, we'll call our traffic engineer, Joe Steiger.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Steiger's appeared before us many times, we'll accept him as an expert witness.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Steiger, would you please provide a general overview of the parking plan?
Yes, we did prepare a traffic evaluation and presented a report to the board in determining what the impacts may be on traffic, and particularly describing and justifying the parking variance that's being proposed. This is five units, four two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom units. It is located on, on East 25th Street, one-way street, in a, in a eastbound direction, parking on both sides of the street. The proposal, currently, right now, the property has a single-family home, that'll be removed, and the addition of those five units. Multifamily units with smaller number of bedrooms generate much less traffic than single-family homes. So the removal of the single-family home will be a reduction of one trip per hour. The addition of the five multifamily will, will be two trips per hour, so the magnitude of increase in traffic would be one trip per hour, which is, you know, absolutely minimal in terms of traffic impact. The key issue that we were involved with is working hand-in-hand with the architect and the engineer, developing a plan that operates safely and efficiently, has sufficient parking, so we went through a whole analysis to establish that. Being that the traffic volume of this, of these five units will be minimal, two per hour, primarily leaving in the morning, peak hour, and the arriving back in the evening peak hour, and I say two per hour, these are the peak hours, the rush hours, those between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., certainly in the middle of the day, middle of the night, it's going to be much less traffic volume, but the peak volume will be two per hour. We do have a, a single car, I'll say driveway, with, can only handle one-way traffic, but again, being that the volume of traffic would be one-way, primarily in the morning, leaving, coming back in the afternoon, there will be no conflict, or absolute minimal probability of any conflict of, of vehicles trying to enter and exit at the same time. But we do have a long throat that certainly if there were instance where you had someone and the, and the ability to stage off of the, off of the right-of-way, to allow another vehicle to, to pass by, but I don't see that prob, the probability of that happening at any, any type of frequency at all. Number of parking spaces is the key issue here, we do have a variance, they were required to have six parking spaces, we are providing four parking spaces, so we're, we're deficient by two parking spaces. We are have, we are in the city of Bayonne, we are within a census tract in the center of the city of Bayonne, tucked in between Avenue E and, and Broadway at this location. We do have characteristics in this area that, that are conducive to a transit-oriented development, meaning that will some or many of these ten, future tenants rely upon mass transit, or have less reliance upon privately-owned vehicles, so that in order to live life in, in a fulfilled way. Being, being one block away from Broadway, which is your city's main business corridor, we have restaurants, we have shops, we have churches in the area, we have recreational parks in the area, so we do have walking distance viability for, or availability of these types of attributes, where you do not have to rely upon privately-owned vehicles. In fact, you don't want to drive through the city to, to go many of these restaurants or shopping and things, things of that nature. And in fact, the, the shopping center, was it Bayonne Commons, is within a reasonable walking distance as well, and there's a pedestrian crossing at Fort, Route 440, I believe at 25th Street or 26th Street. So, again, there is conducive walking availability. We do have the Hudson Bergen Light Rail Station at 22nd Street, you heard from previous testimony, that that's less than a third of a mile away, less than 10-minute walking distance to the light rail. On the other side, we'd have the Avenue C with bus, New Jersey Transit bus lines as well, again, with less than a third of a mile walking distance, less than 10-minute walking distance as well. So this site, I believe, is going to be attractive to tenants that will rely upon that availability of mass transit, and in addition to that, of being able to not own a car, in fact, and still live a life where you can conduct things such as shopping, such as going downtown, such as eating, recreating, going to religious facilities as, as well. And, and so what I did to further establish a magnitude of what can be expected in terms of the parking that would be generated, is the U.S. Census data. One of the data points that the U.S. Census data puts together is vehicles available per household, and they break it down into owner occupied and rental units, and what I found universally, universally, is that rental units generate less parking than owner occupied, these will be rental units. And the reason being is a lot of factors, but probably economics plays the most part in it. In order to own a vehicle today, and maintain it, and operate it, and ensure it, it's over, it's over $10,000 a year, so it's a costly item, and if you don't need to use it day in and day out to commute, to, to live your life, why have a car when you can use Uber, you can use Lyft, you can Carpool, if you live in a neighborhood that, that is densely populated, such as where we're located now? And in addition to that, you can rent a car, and if you need it on the weekends to go away and all, it's a lot cheaper to rent, rent that car a few times or several times a year than it is to own that car and have it sitting in your driveway for most part of your, of your, of your year. So the U.S. Census data, we are in Census Tract 109, but we're right on the edge of, I'll say, of three other census tracts. So what I did was, I looked at the Census Tract information of 109, which were located, and what I found for rental units, that the average, weighted average, is 0.75 vehicles per unit. And then when I took the weighted average of the four census tracts, the, the one that were in, plus the three that were surrounded, .67 park, excuse me, vehicles per unit. So when you multiply that by the, the five units, we're in that order of four parking, four cars for the five units, we provide four parking spaces. So I believe that based on the demographics, the household characteristics of the area, the availability of mass transit, and the urbanized environment that, and setting of this, of this proposed development, which are all the factors that the RSIS, the Residential Site Improvement Standards, rely upon to determine what is appropriate for the number of parking spaces. We have all those attributes, all four of them, that will, will limit and reduce the amount of parking, but the, the proof in the pudding is the U.S. Census data. That's empirical data, that's actual real-life happenings in this part of the city, and I used, the last data that we had was 2022, so it's relatively recent information as well. In addition to that, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, has also documented parking characteristics and parking rates for densely populated areas of mixed uses, where you have these types of other uses that, that are, are within a reasonable walking distance, shopping, restaurants, religious facilities, opportunities, houses of worship, I should say, parks, recreational parks, and so forth, and that comes out to the same number. That's additionally, independent of the U.S. Census data information, comes up the same number of four, for, for, four cars for the five units. So we've, we tested it with the most two, what I believe are the most two reliable sources to determine the number of parking that's required for this development, and come up with the same number. And I, so we will have enough parking based on, based on that, that analysis, based, based on that information that's provided. The other thing that we took a look at, again, was the accessibility of the parking spaces, we did the parking maneuvers, get in and out of those parking spaces, cars will be able to turn around in the rear area, so that they can front in and front out, there'll be no backing out from those parking spaces that use the driveway of the site. So I believe that the site is adequately designed in terms of the amount of parking that's provided, in the circulation pattern that's provided, and that the fact that it's such a low number of multifamily units, that there'll be no impact on traffic conditions in and around the area.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
If I may, Madam Chair, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thank you. Your testimony earlier regarding the additional parking variance required, the engineer asked, I just wanted to know if you had anything to add to that regarding the front space being closer than five feet to the street?
Yeah, yes, it'll, it's closer than five feet to the right-of-way line, but there's a, a wide distance, I believe of 15 feet from the curb line, right? So 15, that, I, we, we did different measurements, but I believe we ultimately came up with 15 feet, so we are 15 feet off of the curb line of, of 20, East 25th Street. So I don't see any detriment in terms of safety for, for that variance that's being requested there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, down the end, Mr. Saw?
Well, your testimony would suggest that at least one of the apartments has to be rented to someone who requires a, a barrier-free space, because he's.
A what?
A barrier-free space.
Oh, okay. It has to be?
Well, in other words, you're counting on four spaces for the five units, and if they're all able-bodied people, they wouldn't be able to use that space, so you'd only have three practical spaces for the five units.
I, I believe the, the law and the standard is, if there is no tenant who is handicapped, legally handicapped, that space does not have to be designated as a handicapped space. It can, it, you take, you don't provide the sign, you don't provide the, the, the striping, and it becomes a usable parking space. Once a, a, a handicap person becomes a tenant and needs that accessibility, then that space reverts to a handicapped space.
Well, if that's the case, that would address my issue. I haven't heard that before.
And we'll, we'll be dealing with the buildings, building department, construction, that, that is probably more adverse in this, in this subject than I am, but that's the way I understand the, the standard to be. Because it doesn't make, you made a, a good point, it doesn't make any sense, if there's nobody who lives in there that is handicapped, why is there a handicapped space that is, is empty all the time, except for maybe the occasional guest that may arrive to, to use that space? So I believe the law was, was written so that it can be used if there's no handicapped person living there.
The other aspect is whether there would be a restriction on the personal vehicle size of the people that would rent. I'm thinking if you've got a, a crew cab pickup, notwithstanding your exercise as in turning movements.
Yeah.
That's not going to be able to turn around at 25 feet.
Yeah, it's not going to do in, in, in the, in the four-point turn that, that we took a, a look at. What we took a look at was the typical large SUV, the, the Grand Cherokee, the, the Ford Explorer, these are large cars for an city environment, and I believe those would probably more than likely be the larger car. Can we accommodate, you know, the F-150, or extended Suburbans, or the, or the, or the Hummers that are, seem to be out there as well?
They're back, yes.
No, they're back, I know. But I think, I think there has to be some logic sense for the, for the tenant to understand that, you know, I, I love my Hummer, and I love driving it, but you know what, this isn't the right place for me. So, you know, we have to look, we can't, we can't design for every absolute possibility, and that's what traffic engineering's all about, we don't design for.
I understood, you're not, not designing for the.
The absolute worst, right, the, that Black Friday.
But I am thinking, but it could be something in the lease, a lease provision.
Yeah, and I think that's.
And I'll tell you why I brought up, Mr. Clavelli, who's also signed the review, indicated that, you know, he went into Manhattan last week, got and parked and took the train in, and in that parking garage were three, you know, extended Dodge Rams.
Right.
And I brought up that issue with him about the parking garage design standards that we have been talking about here in Bayonne, and he said, yeah, well, I see you have a point, because they were sticking out into the parking lot and making it difficult to maneuver.
Yep, and, and, and I see that on occasion as well in, in all, all environments, but those are, again, I think they're the anomaly, and, and we can't design for those, and I think, you know, that has to be common, some common sense, and I think if the applicant's willing to make that a condition of a lease agreement, I think it's reasonable. Say, larger than 17 feet long, or, or something. Say, larger than 17 feet long or or something. Right. Those those Ford Explorers and the and the Grand Cherokees are 16 feet long. So if, you know, something longer than that would be something that's extenuous.
We can certainly add those limitations to to the leases.
Just one question with your turning template movement, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Where the voice was coming from?
No problem. So the site plan and architectural plan is different in the fact that there's a street tree and the curb cuts are different. Did you evaluate your turning movement backing out with the tree directly beyond the spot?
Yes. I don't know if this plan see, but the tree is purposely, we put the tree at a location, I'll say, to the right of the parking space so that and we do have the 15 feet of maneuverability to get from the street to the parking space and vice versa. That the, yes, we did take a look at the turning templates to make sure that that was accessible.
Just wanted to make sure because the the turn template we received didn't have the tree there. So just wanted to verify.
Yep.
And I think a good question, this may not be a question for a traffic engineer, but for someone to answer at some point is, you know, I'm just thinking of backing out of that spot with a tree there, what type of tree would be there? Because that could hinder your visibility to an extent backing out in a street that, you know, goes eastbound.
And that could be provided. Normally, what we do is we limb the tree, meaning that would cut the limbs from seven feet on down for that site visibility issue as well. And that could be a detail on the plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Just want to clarify, you mentioned about 15 feet from the curb. I'm kind of confused. Is 17 the requirements, minimum requirements to the curb?
That's we'll ask our planners.
Could you repeat that?
He mentioned that he has 15 feet from the parking to the to the curb.
Did you mean 15 feet or a 15-foot curb cut?
No, 15 feet from the from the right of way to the property line.
That looks about correct.
And my question is, is not 17 the requirements?
The parking space itself is 18 feet. He has 18 feet in the parking space, and he has maneuverability of 15 behind him. And what would have, that's why I was asking for the turning template, to see if he had run it, to make sure that it will actually work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions up here. Any members of the public have questions for Mr. Steiger, the traffic engineer? Okay, I think we're down to your last and final witness.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. We call our planner Mallory Clark of Dresner-Robin.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Clark.
I always follow the tallest expert on the team whenever I
I feel your pain.
I do. Sure, Mallory Clark, M.A.L.L.O.R.Y.C.L.A.R.K.
And Ms. Clark, would you kindly provide your educational and professional background for the benefit of the board?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from Clemson University and a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed planner in New Jersey since 2021. And prior to my time at my current company, Dresner-Robin, I actually served as a municipal planner for the city of Jersey City for five years.
Okay, we'll accept Ms. Clark as an expert witness. Welcome to Bayonne. I'm assuming, I don't believe you've ever been
Nope, this is my first time appearing before you all, so thank you.
Welcome to Bayonne.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Clark, if you would please provide your overview?
Sure, so I don't I don't want to belabor the site details too much, but I think it would be beneficial just to bring up one slide that I can speak to regarding some of the variances. I don't have a slide number here, but it would be in the architecture exhibit that we had earlier. And it's this the slide that has three diagrams I can show you for reference for you to find your way.
I think it's 824.
The one that Ahmed spoke to earlier. Nope, if you go a little further, it's three site plans with some orange labels on it. Yep, there you go. Okay, so in terms of the overall site and the variances listed, I think Ahmed covered a general overview of the the relief we needed. I'll go through each variance. But I do just want to clarify that we are seeking relief under the C2 criteria tonight, meaning that the benefit, we believe the benefits of the project substantially outweigh the detriments of the variances. In terms of the first variance that I think would be appropriate to cover, there is a lot area variance that we are seeking, whereas the zone, the RM zone, requires 1,000 square feet of lot area per unit. Currently, what we're providing is equal to 729 square feet per unit, so there's a deficit there. And I think in terms of analyzing the block and whether the site at this total lot area could really accommodate the five units, I looked at the project immediately adjacent to us, known as the City Line Apartments. That is a six-story building. It is a multifamily building. And they were approved on that site for 95 units. And that's just for the portion of of that building that's directly next to us. It doesn't account for the the building across the street. It is a two-building development. So just directly next to us is a 95-unit building, which provides a lot area of 453.6 square feet per unit. So we're kind of striking a good balance, I think, between what the requirement is of the zone and some of the other existing multifamily on the block immediately adjacent to our property. So I think the 728 is a reasonable accommodation. And I'll talk a little bit more in dealing with the lot coverage and other variances as to how I think we're kind of an appropriately scaled development at five units. And so I think that in terms of the lot area, I think the the benefits of accommodating, you know, this number of units on site outweigh the detriments because I do think we're compliant with the major kind of parameters that we used or barometers, I would say, that we use to evaluate overall site capacity. The main one being FAR. So there's an FAR requirement in the zone of 1.5. We are below that with a little bit of wiggle room. We come in at about 1.43. So I do think we're what we're proposing from a bulk standpoint, from a structural standpoint, can be accommodated within the site as we are compliant with that with that requirement. And then moving to the lot frontage requirement. So there's also a frontage requirement within this zone for 75 feet of frontage for the the mid-rise apartment use. We only have 25 feet of frontage, so we do have a deficit there. And I think that's really because if you look at the kind of scaled table within the ordinance, the mid-rise apartment zoning really contemplates a much larger structure than what than what we're proposing and many more units than what we're proposing. So it's just an overall more traditional, I would say, apartment building. What we have proposed before you tonight falls under apartments within the definitions of the ordinance. But from a structural standpoint, it's very compliant with the existing kind of lower-density one- and two-family homes on the street as we are within the three-story range and within the compliant height of of those structures. So I think what we have in terms of lot frontage is adequate to accommodate the driveway, to get our, you know, the parking that has been discussed on the site and while still providing five units. And I, you know, I think if we look at the units, we have generously sized units on the upper floors with two bedrooms, two-bedroom units at 950 square feet. It's not, you know, we're not really trying to like stuff, you know, some tiny units in in order to get that number up. I think we have very livable, usable layouts proposed before you tonight. So I don't I don't think that not meeting that lot frontage requirement has any substantial impact on the overall project, nor does it have a substantial impact on the public experience of the project and the overall general safety and welfare. We have an adequate driveway and curb cut. We're going to be providing some improvements along the street, the streetscape for the lot frontage that we do have. And I think we're able to accommodate or or come close to accommodating most of the objectives of the overall zone. In terms of the side yard variances, so the zone requires three feet on each side with a minimum of 7.5 feet combined between the two side yards. The existing condition on the property is a zero-foot side yard at the right side of the property. So right where we're abutting the adjacent one-family home, we already have a zero-foot condition there. There are no windows on either building on the facade. So we're continuing that, proposing to continue that existing condition with this application. In terms of the other side, where we're abutting the City Line Apartment Building, we do comply with the setback at the ground floor because we have an opening in the massing to allow for that driveway to the rear. And then the upper floors are brought out to the property line. Again, we have no windows proposed on those property lines, so I don't think that there's a substantial impairment to privacy for the adjacent units. And I just want to offer that in terms of the bulk we're proposing before you tonight, we actually have more than double the required rear yard setback. So we're not proposing, you know, a monster building on this site. And again, this kind of goes back to that initial point I was making about the lot area variance, which is in providing that, I think we're at 43 and a half feet, I believe, on the rear yard, where the ordinance requires 20 feet. And it's actually, I think, in terms of light and air, a better configuration overall for the adjacent properties because we're creating a much more expansive void in the property by having that doubled rear yard, which which requires us then to bring the bulk a little bit more to the side yard property line. But in terms of light and air to the center of the block, where the block tends to be most congested, I think we're opening things up nicely. And it's also where we're abutting some very large structures between the mid-rise apartment building and the school building directly behind us. Okay, in terms of the lot coverage, so our architect covered that in some detail, but I just want to reiterate for the board's benefit. We have a existing lot coverage of 100%. The ordinance requires 70%. The plans that I believe you received had a a metric of 93% reduction, which was due to that landscaping we were adding in the rear around the parking spaces. In response to some of the comments from your board professionals, we did want to consider measures we could take to further reduce that and and come closer to the intent of the ordinance. So we did look at that option of adding the permeable pavers to the rear parking spaces, which would bring our final final coverage number per the zoning code is 85%. So it's a 15% reduction from the existing condition, which I think, you know, when we're talking about the C2 criteria and the benefits substantially outweighing the detriments, I think we're bringing the site much closer to conformance than what exists today and opening up that permeability is a really significant benefit to the site and to the block as a whole. If you look at some of the aerials that you were taking through in the architecture exhibit, the the block as a whole is a very impervious block. We have very large surface parking spots, parking lots behind us and at the end of the block, and some very large structures that have high building coverage ratio. So any level of permeability that can be brought to the block, I think, is a significant benefit. In addition, we are proposing to add the 550 square feet of green roof. So if you met, if you consider the green roof in conjunction with the other impervious or pervious surface on the lot, we would be at the compliant 70% ratio. The zoning code is not clear as to whether they weigh a green roof in terms of impervious coverage, but from a numbers standpoint, I think it's significant for the board to understand that that would bring us from on a square foot basis to a compliant ratio. And for the board's benefit, I I know that there was an earlier question about stormwater management. The major benefit that green roofs really bring, they're they're twofold, right? It's it just opens up some permeability for the site, but it's also the time release benefit. So the USGSA, which, if I have my acronyms correctly, I believe, is the the Office of General Services Administration, has done some studies on the benefits of green roof in urban environments in particular. And what they have found that it results in a 65% reduction in runoff on a rooftop. So from in in comparison to just a shingle roof, adding that green roof reduces the amount of runoff that enters the city's stormwater system by 65%. And more significantly, it holds that water for three additional hours. And where that's a big benefit is, you know, as we are all aware in recent years, the type of rain events that we have been getting have been high-intensity, short-timed events, right? We're seeing immense amounts of rain in a one-hour storm. And it's creating massive flooding, particularly in our urban environments, but throughout the state. So that that holding of the water and holding of the demand for an additional three hours to allow the the city's overall stormwater system to come back down to a baseline is a huge benefit. So I think adding that strategy in to our project in order to to kind of try, make a good faith effort to achieve, you know, the the intent of the lot coverage requirement within the zoning ordinance is a substantial benefit. I do want to note that there was a curb cut variance noted in the engineering plan, but I think we've addressed that through through comments and testimony that we will have a compliant curb cut, so that variance is not necessary. And then regarding the parking space variance, which is its parking space requirements from property lines. So it's three feet on a side property line to a parking space. So our our central parking space located underneath the building does not meet that requirement. And the five feet from the front property line, as as was just discussed a little bit with our traffic expert. And so in speaking to those variances, I just want to offer that we are seeking the side yard variance. So I think we've already made it clear that we are seeking to maintain that zero zero setback condition on that property line. And the parking spot that abuts the side property is actually tucked under the building there. So it's not going to be an added impact from what would already occur with the structure itself. It's not, it's not increasing that impact in terms of the depth of the lot and how we relate to the adjacent property. We also do have a fence proposed in the rear yard, so I do think that there will be some visual buffering to prevent that from impacting the neighbor in the rear yard. In terms of the front yard, I think, you know, we touched on the fact that there's a substantial sidewalk. I just want to clarify for the record, from the curb line to the property line, where our parking space is beginning, is actually, I think, 23 feet I just measured on Google Earth. So it's a, it's a very deep sidewalk. And in adding the tree, I know there was some concern about sightlines. And I think, as our traffic expert said, we usually address that from a safety perspective through proper pruning of the street trees. In in terms of safety, that tree actually creates enough friction behind the the parking space here that I think it actually improves the safety overall because it's going to require that anyone ever backing out of that spot is really moving slowly, paying attention to where they're going, looking behind them for their own benefit. But I think the trickle-down effect there is that it's going to be a very carefully navigated maneuver to get out of that spot. And and that the, I want to make clear, because I think it was a little convoluted in in previous testimony, that the intention is not for that car to back directly out onto the street from that spot. They will still be maneuvering into the driveway and the curb cut. So they will still be utilizing, you know, the the defined access point and egress point to the site. So in terms of overall project, I do feel that we are proposing a project that is is advancing the purposes of zoning specifically within the MLU. I believe that we're advancing Purpose E, which is to establish appropriate population densities and concentrations and to promote the welfare of neighborhoods. We've spoken to the fact that we are actually in the TDO zone, which is the Transit Development Overlay Zone. Unfortunately, that zone doesn't actually offer us relief from parking requirements, which is a little bit atypical with transit-oriented development. Usually, there's a lower parking ratio in those zones in order to incentivize utilizing mass transit. So we do still require the the parking relief for the the one space, or the two spaces, rather, I apologize. But I do think that i- if we look at the objectives set forth in the master plan and in the ordinance from the TDO zone, really what we're calling, what the ordinance is calling for is transit-oriented development patterns that function as a transit village with a mix of uses, high-density residential development, and an emphasis on mass transit. So I think we're in a high-density zone. We're in a TDO overlay. We're proposing a project that is, I wouldn't call it high-density by any means. If you actually look at the the density standard of our site, we're coming in at 60 units per acre. The other zoning standards in the TDO zone call for 90 to 160 units per acre on a site such as ours. So we're still well below that. I don't think we're over overburdening the site from that perspective. But I I do think that we're advancing the purposes, as I said, of establishing appropriate population densities and also of the ordinance itself. There are also several objectives and recommendations of the master plan that I think we are advancing with the application before you tonight. Just to to hit a few just for the board's edification. The recommend, there have been recommendations to lower parking requirements in the transit redevelopment areas. It doesn't seem that that has been acted on at this point in time. But I do think that with the four spaces we're providing, we have shown that we have adequate parking for the site, given our location and proximity. They also, one of the recommendations is to promote of development, to promote development of a range of housing types with a mixture of densities, particularly in transit-oriented villages. So I think we do have So I think we do have, and again, we're kind of offering that missing middle. We have a high-density, large residential property directly next to us. We have garden apartments across the street from us, and then we have some lower-density single-family and two-family homes on the street, and we're providing a nice balance between all of that to really offer, you know, sometimes we call this like, quote, "the missing middle," that we often don't contemplate in zoning, was that, that kind of like scaled down multifamily level that might not hit, you know, a six-story building, but also allows for a smaller structure to accommodate more units at reasonable sizes. And additionally, in terms of project selection and design standards in the master plan, there's a call for, as I just said, a properly-sized infill development that leverages a net environmental, social, and economic improvement for underutilized or disturbed sites. So I think, you know, we talked about the environmental benefits that I think we're bringing with, A, just relieving the coverage at any level, but B, in consideration of trying to, to really meet the intent of that 70% requirement. I think I've touched all the variances required. As I said, I, I believe that you, just in general, I think the project proposed before you tonight is really, you know, an improvement from the existing conditions of the site and very much in line with the intent of the zoning ordinance and the scale of development contemplated and existing in the neighborhood. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Clark? Okay, I'll turn to the end. Mr. Slaw, you may begin.
So if you took this lot and you were able to acquire the adjacent neighbor's lot, not saying it's for sale, but just as a theoretical exercise, you would then have a lot that met a lot of the parameters that this lot does not. And you would have had two units that you would be able to demolish, and under the parameters, you would have six units altogether, and probably address a lot of the things that you've just said again in your testimony. So why wouldn't that have been an approach to take instead of the approach that was taken here, which is replacing one unit with five units?
I can't, personally, as a professional, I can't speak to why an adjacent lot wasn't acquired. I think that's a question for ownership. I don't know that that law is eligible. That's like beyond the control of, of us as professionals. But I think, I just want to go back to the fact that we did take a look at some of the existing densities immediately adjacent to our site, and we are, we are more relaxed than what exists in the neighborhood and immediately touching our property today. Therefore, I think the five units is, is an appropriate proposition.
Are you aware that the City Line project is in a redevelopment area?
Yes, I am aware. But I, I think, so I think that point really speaks to the fact that it, it's in a different zone, so I think that, that's a good thing for the board to be aware of, that is a redevelopment project in a designated redevelopment plan. But I don't think that that changes the impacts of public safety and welfare to the pedestrian on the block. I don't think that because a, a line was drawn on paper, the way that they experienced that building and that level of density in the neighborhood changes.
I don't necessarily think that then goes to your application, however, but that's your testimony.
Correct.
So I apologize, because I don't think this is going to be a question for the planner, but I realize I was going down my list. Was there any testimony on trash removal and access into the basement for the accessible unit?
I believe our architect spoke to it, but I don't know if you'd like him to repeat.
Sorry to ask, but if he could repeat, because I think it's a little more important within accessible unit there.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yes, I, I did speak to the, the trash room is in the cellar for the units, and, and the units will be bringing their, the, the upper units, the four units on top. Bring in the trash to the bottom, will be taken out on pickup days. The trash for the accessible unit is within the unit, and it's, it'll be taken out from their front door directly to the sidewalk.
And will it be taken out by the residents or a maintenance company?
I believe in the past, what the owner had done is they basically, somebody in the building is, is, works with the owner to bring out the trash for all the tenants. That's a typical procedure. In terms of whether that's going to be the case or a company will do it, it's either-or. It's not going to be left up to each tenant by itself to bring it out, if that's the intent. Yes. Of course.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that have a question for Ms. Clark, the planner? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, I will turn it over to comments from the public. So sir, if you do wish to come back up to make your comment now.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
We just have to swear you in.
Okay, again, sorry for that, my previous jumping into, I didn't know that.
That's okay.
At the end, I have to come over here. Actually, as I told before, this is the first time I'm appearing over here. So I, what I have seen, the gentleman gave me this on their plan, and I observed that some more than 70% of paperwork has been done, but I was, by looking at this page, which is the project location, I was thinking that, because finally, if, when they are done their construction, our, our property will be sandwiched between the two big buildings, and it will block the sunrise, sunlight while at the rising of the sun and at the sunset both the times. So it means that there will be no sun doing the plantation in my backyard, so there, that cannot be done. So I assume that it will affect my, to lower down the value of my property, because there will be no privacy now, because there is, next door is this gentleman, and previous to it is 34 East is a funeral home, which we have experienced that, you know, that they're once in a week, they're too much busy over there, and that's a natural phenomenon. But what I'm assuming is that because of this sunlight, or it will affect my privacy of my family. So I'm assuming that, because I have no intention to sell it, in the, maybe 15, 20 years, I, I don't have any intention to sell the property. So my value of my property will go down because of this high rising, because if you look into this, I don't know, you can pull up this page, this one, this is the project location.
It's in the beginning of the presentation? It's in the same presentation, the architecture? Sure. It's towards the beginning?
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms.
Of course, of course.
This one.
That one.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Hammett. So if you look into existing, this, this orange building is reddish-orange is existing right now, but when they elevate it, it will go at the same level as the funeral home is. So higher than my, my property. So it means that there will be no, I mean, even I would say fresh air, light, definitely it will affect the light rays in our property. So I don't know. I'm not a technical person, but I will show this plan to somebody who knows technically how much it will affect our property. But right now, I can say only, non-technical person, as a non-technical, I can say that it will lower my, my value of my property, and there will be no sun, sunlight from either side, from, from 34 and 38. I'll be in shade all the time, 24 hours I'll be in the shade. There will be no daylight over there. So that's, right now, my concern is.
Okay.
And thank you very much for giving me opportunity for that, and that's it for them.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this point, you will have an opportunity for your closing statements.
Great. Could I call our architect up to address the public's concern?
I'll defer to Mr. Campisano, because your witnesses already had an opportunity to testify.
We, we give them the opportunity to comment at this point.
Yeah, it's, that's procedural.
And I, I think, if I may comment as part of my conclusion?
You, you can close any way you like. We're not going to tell you how to close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think there was testimony that, A, from Ms. Clark, that a three-family would, would be approximately the same size as what we're proposing. It wouldn't be that much different. And you could see the proposed height compared to what is there now, really would only, doesn't compromise any windows or anything.
The microphone.
Oh, so I can face it, or I can face up here, too. Okay. So it would only, the proposed height as compared to what is present, only really goes above the roof line. It doesn't go above the house line or any windows or anything like that compared to what is there now. And with that, I, I'd just like to state that we believe that this project promotes a general purpose within the, the high-density residential district and the TDO, specifically utilizing creative development and design to promote a desirable visual environment and to promote and encourage a broad range of housing choices and residential growth. Additionally, this project is appropriate considering the surrounding apartment buildings, church, and businesses, and we respectfully conclude our application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capris. So I, before I open it up to comments from the commissioners, I do have a few comments myself. I am glad that Mr. Slaw brought up the fact that this isn't a property that was part of a redevelopment plan, and I will be honest, I'm a bit concerned that, you know, the comment was made about the units in the redevelopment plan, but then there was a comment about that there were one and two-family, they're more consistent with the one and two-family homes on the street. So I, I'm a bit concerned by this particular develop, I, I say development, because it's almost being treated as a development, but this proposal in front of us, the fact that we're creating this parking all the way to the back, there was also a comment that there's a parking lot behind us. I'd just like to, for the record, to show that that's not a parking lot, that's a schoolyard. So we're putting cars parked against a fence where children play. That is a concern that I, I have. I would like that to be known on the record, because we are granting variances for these things, and I don't feel, personally, listening to the testimony, that these variances are warranted when we have a schoolyard behind us. There were several variances presented tonight, you know, one of which being that proximity of that car to the neighboring property, which I, I am concerned with that variance. I'm just looking through my notes. There were also testimony regarding that this property is conducive walking distance to the Hudsonburg and Light Rail, less than a third of a mile, that many of the tenants wouldn't be utilizing cars. So I just feel that something differently could have been presented to us this evening, because we're, we're making space for cars, but we're testifying that, you know, people probably won't have cars there. So I'm a bit confused by that testimony. So I would look to the other commissioners to see if there are any comments regarding this proposal.
Just was saying, I agree.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm really concerned with the schoolyard, you know. Like you said, I agree with that, too.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I, you know, would be looking for a motion to approve with the variances, however, knowing that your vote, the motion would not be approving it. The vote would be what approves or does not approve this particular. I'll correct, Mr. Campisano?
I would, I would express it as, we can make the motion in the affirmative, and if you don't care to vote in favor of the application, you vote no.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to explain, but you did a better job. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve, and then we will take a vote? So the approval would be in the affirmative, and then you would vote whether you agree with the affirmative or disagree.
Commissioner Locke, you look perplexed. Making an application at this point with a second to say, uh...
We're going to move to the vote.
We would, we would approve this application. If you disagree with the approval, you would vote no. So it's, if you vote yes, you're in favor. If you vote no, you're not in favor. Did that help?
But you can still move or second and have a vote that is not supporting that move or second. Okay, so I think that may be something needed clarifying. Okay. So do I have someone who wants to make a motion so that we can get the vote going? If not, I'll make the motion to get the vote going. Okay, and then we'll take the vote.
Chairperson Fiamonte.
No.
Commissioner Valoz.
No.
Commissioner Booker.
I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Locke.
Abstain.
Commissioner Quintella.
Yes.
The application has been denied.
Thank you for being before us this evening. Hopefully, you'll be able to come back with something for the board. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda?
Happily resolutions.
Okay.
I'm going to suggest that with regard to the ordinance updates, that we group the three that we've approved for resolution adoption together. So it's P-24001I, J, and L. Can I get a motion and a second to approve that?
So moved.
And on the vote, chairperson Fiamonte.
Aye.
Chairperson Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. Commissioner Valoz, I think I just gave you a raise. I think I called you chairperson, too.
Oh, that's okay.
Next is P-24...
I'll share the duties.
Yeah, Mike, you want to say something?
I have a question. I guess 12 was moved, and 13 was moved also?
They were adjourned.
They, 12 was adjourned, then?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that. I got the 13, okay. I'm trying to get some trees for the park, and I said, I'll have to come back next week, then, next month.
Next month. Don't come back next week. You won't get us. P-24-013, that's the redevelopment amendment at 26 North Street, City Block 297, Lot 3. Can I get a motion and a second to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Taken.
Commissioner, Chairperson Fiamonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. Next is P-24-014, that's the redevelopment amendment for the Peninsula Bayonne Harbor South, Block 751. A motion and a second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiamonte.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. That's it for this evening. Motion and a second to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.